Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, the gang call here, city officials, and also our home audience, still in black and white tonight, but we're still working on that. Welcome to our April 11th city council meeting. Tonight, we have 12 items on our agenda. At this time, Mr. Schofield, would you please continue with roll call of members?
Cartier?
Here.
Clay?
Here.
Corcoran?
Here.
Florina?
Here.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Gattman?
Here.
If we all would, please stand up for the panel. [applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes from the previous meeting have been distributed for everybody. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes? Mr. Cartier?
I move with one minor clerical correction under Community Affairs on page one, substitute Mr. Clay for Mr. Cartier, not to steal the spotlight or anything, just to make it clear.
Make it get your name in there, okay. Do I have a second, or do I have a second to accept the minutes with Mr. Clay? Roll call on the, please.
Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Gattman?
Yes.
And the minutes from the last meeting have been accepted with that change. At this point, we have reports of committees. Who would like to report? Mrs. Gray?
Thank you, President Arnold. Human Resources has one agenda item this evening, item number 11, first reading on ordinance to establish pay scale for part-time seasonal employees in Parks and Rec, Recreation, Swimming Pool, Service Engineering, Administration, and Utilities Departments. And at the appropriate time, I will ask to request, I will request to waive the three read rule according to pass the legislation this evening in order to get staff hired in time for seasonal employment. The committee would also like to acknowledge receipt of an additional assignment of, let's make sure I get this right, 16 dash 042 regarding the request for legislation to create a part-time clerical position in the Audubon's office. And as soon as I can get the schedule cleared, I will have a meeting to hear this legislation. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time?
See?
This is, this is, this is Corcoran?
Okay. All right.
Miss Corcoran?
It's Monday. The Parks and Rec Department has four items on the agenda this evening. The first one being number seven, to accept and appropriate $508.37 insurance claim reimbursement for damages to the light at Yachtangy Park entrance. The second one is to accept a donation from the City Run towards work on the bridge in Yachtangy Park for $10,000, and that was from last year's Run, correct? So we'd also like to thank those that participated and donated. Number nine, appropriate $16,500 to complete repairs to Stone Bridge and Park. There were earlier bids that were placed last year, and then when we went to revisit this issue, prevailing wage wasn't incorporated into that, so that's the majority of the increase in this project of $16,500. And I think the total project is like $51,200. Item number 10, to appropriate $110,200 to purchase necessary items and fund various projects. A lot of these projects, and I'm just going to read them off briefly, were appropriated funds last year, but the projects, for various reasons, did not get done, didn't get brought forward. Some of these are items that we have since deemed that have been ignored for too long, and so we are, these are some items that we feel that are necessary, and some of them absolutely for safety. Yachtangy restroom repair, $17,000. Strawzer Poland Southern restroom repair, $30,000. Ventrac mower additional, this is the mower that we had approved, but they forgot the, a part that they could use for doing other things, snow removal, makes it a more multipurpose vehicle. We had already appropriated funds, but this is an additional $9,000. Security systems for the parks, and I think Bill Bonner spoke to this briefly one evening, and I, we also discussed it in the committee meeting, to be on the outsides of the restrooms that would feed directly, except for the Manor Park, and this would feed directly into the police department, so also making it another security tool for our community and for our parks. Roof repair, Yachtangy West restroom, $700. Additional infield dirt and sand, $16,000. Annex team benches, $3,000. Signs, various signs, most of them relating to security, or to danger, thin ice, $1,000. Mulch and flowers, $3,500. Additional capital maintenance repair work done, needing done to the stairs, and we have a lot of lighting issues right now. I think we have a whole rack of lights in the Ballmer Ball Field that are out. We don't know if we'll have to spend all of this, because we're not sure if it's, if they're completely damaged, or just some repairs. So, all of these items won't be anymore, but in some areas, they might be a little bit less. And I think for just different reasons, last year, we didn't get some things done. We have a lot of volunteers that work within this city to do things in Yachtangy Park, and to get ready for the, for the season, for this is our time. And so at the appropriate time, I'm going to ask to waive the three read rule on all of these items, one to pay, to pay people that have, do the jobs and the vendors to get their money in a more timely fashion, and also so we can get the parks up and running. And at the same time, I'll also ask for support of item number 11, to get our part-time help, because actually, there are some areas that we are already starting to fall behind, because we need help in the park, and the more rain, then you have more of the grass. So, at this time, that's it. And I just, one other thing, or two other things, I passed out a survey, this was created by Mr. Bonner, we are looking into possibly applying for a grant for the Millennium Park. There's some areas out there where you're unable, if you, Millennium Grove, and one of the components of the grant is to have a survey. So we're going to be putting this online, putting it on Facebook, but I just wanted to share it with everyone, and if you want to, while you're here tonight, fill it out, family members, friends, anyone, we would appreciate these filled out, turned in to myself, the Parks and Rec Department, the city building. But it's requesting possibility of some walkway out there at the park, and also, we're hoping that at some point, someday, we have buses that would come and look at the Millennium Grove, and at this point, there's no place to turn around properly, or to back in. So that is what this grant specifically would be for, so that's what that survey is. And just to also give a thanks to the Tree Commission, Bill Bonner and Darren Hunter, for the planting of approximately 58 trees, various cherry trees, down Watt Street from Seventh on, down on the green lawn, the fence, on the fence post there, I think there's like 28 trees that were planted there. They planted all of them themselves. And then also on Yachtangy, across Bridge Street, towards Strawzer on the left-hand side. And so hopefully, in 10 to 15 years, I know it sounds like a long time, but we'll have beautiful canopies of cherry trees, different kinds, that will create, create a green environment for our community, and so aesthetically pleasing.
So, here's a question on the cameras you were talking about, excluded Manor Park, what was the reason for?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure, I know that there's, there's already, maybe it's they don't have issues out there, I'm not sure. There's, I don't even know if there's a restroom at Manor Park, I didn't think there was, so that's, I don't think there is. And I just thought of that this evening, and I thought, well, why, why do they have that? Which, was a question I hadn't asked. But I don't think they have them out there. But I know there's a lot of cameras out there anyway, because there's two businesses right there, and they patrol that tree, and it's all changing too. So they might be adding their own at some point. So that's all I have, if anybody else has any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Anybody else? Mr. Cartier?
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. I have two brief items tonight. The Community Affairs Committee has one item on tonight's agenda, item number five. This is a regular agreement between the city and the county for reimbursement, indigent criminal defense counsel. This was budgeted for in the annual budget process, so I would ask for council's favorable consideration of this item tonight. The other thing is, the land bank committee had a meeting last week, and we had a good discussion, I thought, that produced some proposals that the city is going to take to the county, has taken to the county, and the county is going to review them, to determine whether or not it's feasible to establish a land bank in conjunction with the city. Anyone in the audience who has any questions about what a land bank is, feel free to come to me afterwards, or send me an email, and I could send you the minutes of that meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cartier. Anybody else? Mr. Gattman?
Thank you, President Arnold. The Engineering Committee has three items at this moment on the agenda tonight, but I believe we have to address the one that came in late. Do we have to do a three-day receipt rule?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We like that motion now?
Yes.
Got a motion for a three-day receipt rule, signed by Mr. Florina. Roll call on the motion for the three-day receipt.
Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Gattman?
Yes.
And that would be item number 12 on our agenda this evening.
Okay, now, going back, the Engineering Committee has four items on the agenda tonight. Number three, it's the third reading on changing the speed limit to make it better, I don't know, Route 50, so things are smooth and don't go from 40 to 55 or 45, which I think that makes common sense. Third reading on number four, it's the no parking area, it's this little area between an alley and a parking lot entrance on 300 East Second Street. Number six, the second reading, to establish two-way traffic in the alley adjacent to the Tiffin School. And number 12, it's the emergency crossing plat, we have to approve the final plat approval. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Gattman. Anybody else have a report? Mr. Florina?
Safety Services has two items on the agenda, first and second items, third reading on both, the approval of hiring a full-time parking enforcement, and for $60,000. The second, the, this amendment to amend the parking violation table. We have gone through these names, and I am looking, as a third reading, for favorably support from the council. Also to address, there is another assignment that's separate to this, that we will be working on, to request and review legislation to evaluate restricted parking areas in the downtown Chillicothe area. So we do have two separate issues. This current, the current two issues should go favorably, because we will be addressing this. Other issues that will fall in line, that will be directly affected. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Florina. Yes, Mrs. Neil?
I'd just like to express my support for the passage of item one on the agenda, the full-time parking enforcer. The Parking Committee was in conjunction with the Downtown Development Committee. They started meeting in the beginning of 2014. And in that time, we met with parking meter manufacturers, people that had developed parking strategies for small cities. We talked to other cities that had parking plans. And the one thing that, one of the few things that everyone could agree on, was that a parking plan started with parking enforcement. And it's important, I think, that people understand that, that this in no way is a program to generate money for the city. It is solely about building on the momentum we have in the downtown. This will allow our existing businesses to turn over their parking spaces. It will generate more interest in investment in our downtown buildings. The key to this is to keep the premiums, parking spaces turning over and allowing for customers. So while we have this momentum going in the downtown, all this interest that's being generated, I just think that now is the time for us to do this. Of course, there's never an ideal time to spend money on parking enforcement, but I think we should look at this as an investment in our downtown, and one that we, I think this is the time we need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neil. Mrs. Gray?
Thank you, President Arnold. I too would like to voice my support for the item number one, in reference to hiring a full-time parking enforcer. I fully believe that the two issues that we've been talking about, discussing here at council and in committee, are mutually exclusive. The issue with parking on Fourth Street is a decades, and I mean decades, old problem that we've been grappling with for, since I worked for the city. And I know that as a member of the church that's on Fourth Street, as well as knowing individuals who worked for the city who had places, had no place to park, it's been an issue. And, but I fully believe that what we're talking about tonight, and wanting to pass tonight, is a totally different issue than the parking. It's much bigger than that, if you will, and I think that we need more time to be able to address, to make sure that we are able to provide a solution for the residents, as well as the businesses here in the downtown area. And I know that some of the decisions that were made over the past year or two, with respect to parking, probably are going to have to be revisited in order to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else? Yes. Mr. Corcoran?
The Finance Committee does not have any items on tonight's agenda. Tom, Tom Truschel, watching at home.
He's, he's already texted me and told me that sound no one's perfect.
But we do not have any items on tonight's agenda, but I would like to announce that we will be having a Finance Committee meeting on Monday, April 18th, at 7:00 PM, to discuss indigent burial, also council chamber conditions, and I believe also the payment of the substitute clerk of council.
And actually, he just texted me and told me you were too loud for him to microphone. I love that. So the works started back on the table.
I also...
That's called a helicopter.
Also, on a, on a serious note though, I also want to speak about the parking enforcer legislation. I was originally leaning towards opposing this new position, with drugs and theft problems in our town, and, you know, it's affecting our citizens. I was wanting to make sure that we got more police on the streets, and though I value and appreciate the thoughts and concerns of the downtown business owners, my concerns were on these illegal activities that have impacted our citizens' lives and our city's image. However, you know, I try to do my homework, and so I spoke to the auditor, I spoke to the police department, and I've had to kind of rethink my position, because as the auditor pointed out to me, that these funds would not be, you know, these are coming out of traffic control, these aren't funds that would be used to pay for a police officer, they're used for traffic control, and which would be parking enforcement. And then, of course, talking to the police department, they pointed out that creating this new position would be able to take some of the responsibility of parking enforcement off their backs, and allow the police department to focus on the crimes that I have concerns about, and also increase some nuisance control around the city. So I'm happy to hear also that we were able to hire a new police officer, and I hope that we can continue to strengthen that department, and, you know, strengthen our city in return. I also want to thank the mayor for bagging the meters on Fourth, and I look forward to finding a better solution for parking on that street, hopefully meter free. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Mrs. Corcoran?
I'd just also like to just say ditto, 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 ditto to everything they have said about the parking enforcer issue, I agree, but the one thing I, as of even last night, I was receiving phone calls and having conversations about issues with individuals with parking downtown, other places. So what I would just like to say to the citizens is that, please continue to call us, please continue to email us, and that, you know, just because we hire a parking enforcer doesn't mean we don't want to address on, on an ongoing basis, issues that people are having. So please, you know, like we've said, these are separate issues, and we will be happy to discuss. And I know, you know, I have some items to hand over to Mr. Florina, and so maybe, for those of you that are listening out there, if you have some issues, please let us know now, also, because we are going to be having meetings very soon. So it's always nice to have agenda before the meeting, and then instead of, you know, because here's kind of an example, that this has been being talked about for a couple of years, but for some reason, some of our constituents didn't know about it. And so now they're coming to us at the last minute, when really, there's just been an incredible amount of work that has been done, and with the downtown development, and other individuals looking at this, which I applaud all of them and thank them. And those groups are also willing to talk to people, especially in the downtown area. So please, just let us know, and know that we are moving forward on a lot of these items soon, so let us know as soon as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Anybody else have committee report, or any discussion on any of the current assignments at the end? If not, we'll move on to reports from our officials, mayor Feen.
Thank you, President Arnold. I think I'll continue on the parking enforcement topic. Of course, I'd ask for your favorable support on items one and two. I'd like to thank a lot of people, really, Downtown Development Commission for just getting this going. I think it's, you know, the Downtown Development Commission, I think, was created in 2014, and this is one of the first big things that they tackled in committee. This process, which we started three months ago or so, has been a good one, because it's, it's allowed us to hear, just as Councilwoman Corcoran was saying, we've heard from folks about their issues, it's created a new committee assignment, issues that, you know, frankly, weren't on my radar before, you know, the people who have an apartment downtown, and nowhere to park, you know, permits for that kind of thing. So I appreciate all the citizens who have come forward, concerns, expressed their concerns. That's what we're here for, is to respond to those concerns and be a responsive city, and I'm looking forward to tackling that, that next assignment. As some of you may have noticed, we did put bags on the meters on Fourth Street. When we, when we looked into it, I was kind of thinking we had canvas bags, but we put paper bags out, and it's raining quite a bit out there. But there are bags. I'm trying to send a message, we've been responsive and listening to the needs of the people. Tomorrow, we will be responsive and listen to the needs of the people, because there's going to be white paper everywhere. But the point being, as I think Councilwoman Gray pointed out, there's been great fluctuation in the parking situation within the last nine months, between Hayne Street, the lot on the corner of Fourth and Hayne, the two lots that the city has leased. And so that, that has created a really dynamic, fluid situation that needs to be addressed as a whole, which is why I felt comfortable, you know, making it clear to the folks on Fourth Street, that, that just because we're hopefully hiring a, a new parking person, it's not, it's not about revisiting that issue per se. I think what the Downtown Development Commission originally came to me with was seven recommendations, nine recommendations, it's a long list. And I told, I told that committee, we're only going to take, you know, the one or two top ones, and we're going to tackle it, you know, a little bit at a time, and we'll get this knocked out, and go on to the next one. And I think, I think if these items fasten, then I, then we'll move on to the next one. But it's a fluid situation, I, I appreciate, you know, council's attention to detail, the questions that have been asked. It allows us to, you know, be responsive to the citizens, so thank you. And of course, I ask for your favorable vote on those two items. Skipping ahead to item eight, it's actually topical, this Saturday is the City Run. And so last year at this time, the folks who put on City Run raised $10,000 to specifically go towards the repair of the bridge at Yachtangy Park. There's quite a bit of work to be done, but I really look forward to seeing some of the grandeur restored. And frankly, that, that is a really significant contribution, so I want to thank, thank the City Run folks for this, I think that was their second contribution. This year, in their third year, they're going to be contributing basically to downtown beautification, and trash cans, flower pots, and we're actually going to have eye cracks downtown for the first time. So they really do a lot, they do a heck of a job putting on the run on Saturday. So I'd ask for your favorable support in passing number eight tonight, it'd be a neat thing if they could announce that we're moving forward with the repair of that bridge on Saturday. And of course, if you're free Saturday morning, head downtown and check out the City Run.
Mayor Allen?
Anybody on that? Somebody on Google?
Registration's pretty early, I think it's 8:00 AM.
Eight, yeah, something like that.
And $35 to $40 per registrant.
And I'll add, it's a fun day in Chillicothe, it's also the same day as Earth Day, so downtown, there's going to be a lot going on, I think the weather's supposed to be nice. Sojourners also has some activities that day, so head downtown one way or another, park, spend your money. But I can say anything about that, too. Item number nine is sort of the companion piece to number eight, I ask for your favorable support on it. I'll touch briefly on item 10. So over the past several years, just in round numbers, the Parks and Rec income tax toll we generated is about $700,000. $175,000 approximately goes into the pot that is reserved for capital. We have not been spending anything close to that $175,000 in that capital over the past few years, and we've had a little bit of a surplus build up. So the request here, as Councilwoman Corcoran mentioned, is a bunch of the stuff we saw last year, we're tackling it this year, we will be spending more than the revenue brought in on income tax this year, but we wouldn't expect this level of spending to continue, just look at it maybe as a catch-up year. We've had good meetings with the Women's Softball League, and Bill, Bill has just really tackled this head-on with, you know, in terms of the bathrooms and security, you know, the repairs that are necessary. So I think it's really going to allow us to catch up a little bit, and get to a stable level. So we're eager to get those projects going, so I'd ask for your favorable consideration on number 10 as well. And the same for number 11. It was my goal to get this out a little bit earlier in the year, but April, I think, is, is, is pretty good if we pass it tonight. But as I, as I drove on Yachtangy, I saw grass already that was a little high for my taste, so you can get out there and start mowing that stuff down, that would be a good thing. Finally, last Monday, we hired, actually, we hired a while back, but the first day of our new Safety and Service Director, Jeff Corman. I've invited him to be here tonight, and just like to ask him to introduce himself, and just maybe tell us a little bit about yourself, and floor is yours.
As the mayor said, I'm Jeff Corman, this is the start of my second week, taking ground running. This is the start of my second week, taking ground running. I come to the city after 30-plus years with the Ohio State Highway Patrol, with the last two years being in the Office of Personnel. I've lived in Ross County for these 16 years, coming up here real quick. I'm excited. I'm excited about getting back in the community. Some of you may remember, I was the post commander out here for four or five years. My wife and I, we fell in love with the area, you know, we bought a house and this is where we're going to stay. We raised our kids here. And like I said, I'm real excited about getting back, working with the mayor and working with you all and moving the city forward where we need to take it to. Get with me, I'll give you my contact information. You can contact me anytime. As I've said, I work with the Highway Patrol and my phone's used to ring all hours of the night, so feel free to call me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hitting the ground running is an understatement. I was out Monday and Tuesday and then the first day I met with him was Wednesday and he said, "I just came from a grievance hearing" and it was, we threw him to the wolves. But on that topic, I mean that, hide them. On that topic, one of the things he tackled last week was some of the conversation we've had recently about Watt Street and truck traffic. As it turns out, my understanding is that that road was actually, that portion of Watt Street was never actually a truck route. And so over time, somehow it actually just sort of became used as a truck route. As a lot of you know, there was gas work done, there was some plates that weren't well-placed, so our service guys got out there and got the volume down a little bit. There are currently signs out that Jeff went and took care of to make sure that, you know, trucks are aware that it's not a truck route. We had wrote closed signs for a while, but we're trying to do this balance of accessibility for the businesses and the people still on the street and also, of course, being mindful of the residents who live there, the traffic down there. So I appreciate him rolling up his sleeves on that day of work. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Feeney. Thank you very much. And next is our auditor, Ms. Spednagle.
I have several things I want to touch base on today, the first being the agenda number one, which is for a higher full-time parking enforcer for $60,000. I wanted to point out that that calculation was completed prior to the start of 2016 and now that we're hanging into the second quarter, that cost would actually be reduced for the year. So assuming that this is passed, the new full-time parking enforcer would begin around mid-May. So that would make the cost for 2016 a reduction to about $39,000. I'd also like to point out that that amount includes estimated benefits such as retirement and family health insurance, so that's not the gross wage. It's a very conservative amount, assuming that the person would need family health coverage and would be hired into a little bit higher step on the pay scale. At the first, at the point that this appropriation makes, at this point, it may seem a little high, however, the portion that was unspent for the first quarter of the year could be used to buy new tickets, equipment, and equipment maintenance, which would prevent the need to request more appropriation of funding later. The next topic I want to talk about is parking violation fines. I'd like to touch base on the revenue side of that topic. Assuming that the parking enforcer gives out 20 tickets a day, which is what's given out now, currently on a part-time basis, the city could bring in an estimated amount of $100,000, assuming that 50% of their tickets are paid on time, that would come to $36,000, and assuming 30% pay, that pay late with the additional late fee, that would bring in another $57,000 for a total income of $93,000. The point in talking about that is just to say that the $100,000 would not only go towards paying for some of that wages of the parking enforcer, but would also be used for some of the maintenance that would come along with that position. The next thing I want to talk about, oh, and the revenue also does not take into consideration any type of fluctuation of revenue from meters that could or may not be functional, such as the meter on Fourth Street. So that is just strictly an estimate of revenue. The next thing I want to talk about on the, is today, is number 10 on the agenda. I just want to point out for this ordinance, which is for the appropriation of $110,000 for Parks and Recreation, we made an amendment to that to include in Exhibit A, which would break out the various funds that need to be used because right now it's pretty, it's grouped together, so this would prevent proper allocation of everything to make sure there was no over-spending. And then lastly, I just want to remind everyone that the income tax department is still open this week from 7:30 to 16:00 to allow extra time to file your taxes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spednagle. And now our law director, Ms. Ruffler.
Hi, thank you. President Arnold, Auditor Spednagle, you might want to pass out those agendas. There you go. I have nothing else to report on, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruffler. Items that I have to discuss, just a couple of things to point out. I mentioned earlier, those that are being televised. The issue that has come up on Time Warner is that if we turn off the system, it resets itself and we go back to black and white. And the gentleman was not available to turn this back on. So to take care of that problem, he's asked that we have something on all the time. So I have since bought a title maker now that we can put titles on there and have something on their channel all the time so we don't lose color. And with doing this, at some point in time, once I get used to operating it, because it's a new item, it's not new, I actually bought it on my own money, it's been bought used. After I get through the 95 pages to figure out how this thing works, then hopefully we will be able to start putting things on Channel 24 on Time Warner that will tell you when there are different committee meetings are going to be, where possibly to send donations for the fireworks or for the pool, other events or things that council or city might be having coming up. Again, don't look for it right away, but as soon as I can, we'll have that put together. I talked to John Fawson before I came into the meeting. He's still home recovering, it's still going to be several weeks for him. Again, I'd like to say thank you for, Don, for coming and filling in. I appreciate that and we all appreciate that very much. And also, I wanted to say that for all you council people, that you have to have your financial, you need to have your financial disclosures in to the state by the 15th. So get this put together, just a reminder. Maybe you've already all done it, I don't know, but I was given that information. And that's really all I have to report. We, at this point, we move on to audience participation. I wonder if somebody could be kind enough to pass the sign-in sheet to Mrs. Patrick over here, but let us fire a bucket down to you if you would. Thank you very much. Audience participation, you, with Council Rule Number 21, you can speak for five minutes on the presentation, a total of 15 minutes per subject. I do need your name and address. We have one person on the sheet and they've already signed in. You do not have to give your address at the microphone, but after this, after this person speaks, anybody else would like to speak, you're more than welcome to. On my sheet, I have Nancy Myers from, Nancy Myers, please.
Good evening and thank you for your time. I presume to speak for the other residents on Fourth Street regarding this legislation about the parking enforcement downtown, but in all my conversations with the other residents up and down the block where the meters are, I don't, I've not spoken with anybody who's against this legislation. I think we're pretty much all supportive of it. I may be wrong, there may be a couple people not in favor, but I for one, I'm in favor of it, I know. I live right next to downtown and I know parking is an issue, so I'm completely 100% supportive of it. With that said, we were really hoping that you would separate these two issues and I think I've heard overtures to that over the last few meetings, that we can pass this legislation, which I think is good for downtown, while separating the Fourth Street issue. But I am kind of curious as to what those white bags are for. I mean, I know that they were put there this afternoon and I was happy to see them, but is that a signal that those meters are not active or is that a signal that we need to repair these meters? I don't know, can anybody answer that?
It's probably a little bit of both. The main encouragement is for, was basically, some towns, most towns, probably us two have canvas bags that say under repair or something like that. But the idea being that with the bags, people wouldn't feel obligated to put money in, that frustration that I think we were hearing from the Fourth Street folks was that it's causing issues in your life that are frustrating and so we were hoping for a temporary fix. It didn't go as far as, some folks had asked that we remove the tops altogether, which is fairly labor intensive. It was meant to be a sort of temporary fix and a signal that we're listening. Unfortunately, it's raining.
Yeah, I know. I wonder how long those bags are going to last. I'm so busy this afternoon.
Next time I can see something like this on the show.
Well, they are white paper, so hopefully not agreeable.
All I know is I think I'm going to be out picking up litter in my front yard tomorrow morning, but, so, but anyway, I, you know, I just want to reiterate, I did have 31 signatures on the petition. We don't want the meters, we don't want them there. And, you know, as for labor intensive, I will volunteer myself free of charge to take those meters out. I'll get a shovel and an axe and a pickaxe and I will take those down myself. If you need me, you let me know, I am free to the city. And I'm sure I can round up lots of neighbors, it'll help. But now, we would really like to have the meters gone. They really are an inconvenience and again, we're not, we're really not interested in two-hour parking on the street or free passes galore. You know, I mean, there are buildings on the street that are three stories tall and so for a visitor to come and visit that, somebody on the third floor of, say, an apartment building across the street from me, so the visitor has to go up three flights of steps and then back down to put a pass on the car and then back up three flights of steps and then at the end, down three flights of steps, grab the pass, back up three flights of steps. I mean, who wants to do that? So we really, we just want to be like any other residential street in the city. And Councilwoman Gray, I appreciate that there's been decades of grappling over this and, you know, historically, I understand that Gazette employees used to park on Fourth Street, that was a problem, but they've downsized and I think they have a, seems to me they have, they must have an agreement. It looks like they have an agreement with First Baptist there maybe, because I see now, so there's some parking back in there. Or maybe there's just such a small step, they can just park in their own little area out there where that forklift used to back around all night long, but, but, you know, and then Horizon also had a lot of people parking on Fourth Street, but again, you know, that's, they've downsized and they've got off-street parking now. So historically, the reasons for those meters were to protect the parking on Fourth Street, but those reasons are kind of gone now, so, you know, just to reiterate, we're really interested in those parking meters being gone, not free passes, not two-hour parking. We just want the same privileges that the rest of the, and I know we're not owed that, you know, we're not owed that, that's a privilege to park on the street, but either give the whole city that privilege or none of the city that privilege. So either meters everywhere in Chillicothe or nowhere on residential streets. So, and again, it just makes sense to me, take those meters and put them downtown where they can really make you some money. I mean, they really turn over a profit there. So, anyway, that's my, I'm sure I'm coming up in five minutes, but thank you for your time this evening, so I look forward to working with the fellow on getting these meters off our street. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Myers. Anybody else who's more than welcome to speak if you'd like?
Yes.
Just give your name and your address, please.
My name is Stephen Truman, address 152 North Brownell Street, and I just wanted to talk about the City Run briefly. Mayor Feeney talked about it, it's a great organization. My church, Open Door, is actually the church that kind of puts it on. We do it with other churches in the community and a lot of people help out. We had talked about registration. Registration is still open and you can actually sign up all the way until the day of. The website is thecityrun.org and like I said, you can sign up there at the event if you want. I don't have the prices on me right now. I think somebody said $35 and that sounds right. I know they were doing discounts, but they discontinued the discounts because it's the week of and it's kind of right at the last minute, but they're always looking for more people and the more people that sign up, the more money we can get back to the city. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? You're more than welcome to. I've not seen anybody. We'll move on to old business. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to bring up? Ms. Patrick.
Thank you, President Arnold. On Saturday, April 2nd, a week, it's been on two weeks ago, I was able to work with Center Point Church and the Open Door Church together and we cleaned up 376 Clay Street. We had a huge pile of brush in the back and garbage out front, but I just want to thank those people for doing that. Most of them don't even live in the city, but they're willing to help the community as a whole and it was just nice to see. And I also want to thank Debbie Ingleman. She did a real good job finding these people that were willing to help. And then I have to speak to the parking enforcer and I know I'll be the odd person out on this one, but I'm sorry, I look at the crime in the community and looking at that amount of money expended, we go towards a full-time police officer. And I just really feel, you know, we need more officers to, I've heard from so many residents in the East End and in the West Side that it's not all about downtown, it's about neighborhoods too. So I'm looking at the neighborhoods, we need to try and attend to their needs as well. But with the numbers in the newspaper, I noticed the face value for the tickets issued was $12,250 and Officer Pratt was able to collect $11,054 without even going to court. That's 91% return. He did a, you know, a very good job. But again, for me, it's the money and the fact we need to start concentrating on the neighborhoods and try and help them out. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Anybody else have any old business they'd like to bring up? I've not seen any.
I got one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Speaking of items one and two, I just wanted to say that I'm not opposed to these items, I do plan on supporting them tonight and voting in favor of them, but I do understand the frustrations that the residents have on Fourth Street. And this was an issue that came to our attention even at the committee meeting before the items even hit the agenda for council, before the first read. We were told that that's why we were going to let this go all three reads, so that we could address the concerns and we weren't going to do emergency language on this, so that gave us more time to address the concerns, but here we are tonight to pass this and we still have not had a comprehensive meeting to address alternatives or options for Fourth Street residents. We've had meetings, we've heard from them, but we haven't had a comprehensive meeting. So I just want to say that I support this legislation, planning on voting in favor of it, but I think we need to consider when we're looking at legislation, negative impacts that maybe we didn't think of at first. And they do come to our attention, we just need to take action on them. And me personally, I think we could have been a little bit quicker to respond to the residents' needs. This item's going to pass tonight, I believe, and it's probably going to become law before we have a chance to address those meters. And I just think that we need to be a little more responsive when we're faced with legitimate concerns about legislation. That's what I'm reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffler. Anybody else? Just to point out that there is a current assignment, 16043, that is dealing with restrictions, just evaluating all parking areas and things like that and getting with restrictions. So I think those items will get heavily discussed in the next few weeks. Yes, Mr. Ruffler?
Well, I'd like to directly address that. I believe that first and foremost, we should definitely address those issues. The item on this agenda is the new assignment, the genesis of that is even broader. So it not only addresses Fourth Street, which is a pressing concern, but it also will include items of possible free parking for the caboose, other items of other parking lots. We can't look at things so piecemeal that we address one issue and then we have another fire address that issue. So a longer, comprehensive, to what you want, is what we're going to produce. So I think with that, if we're so short-sighted to just look at one street, we'll have to address the next street and the next parking lot. we'll have to address the next street and the next parking lot. I believe that this assignment will in total take care of those issues. So that should address what you need.
I don't think it's short-sighted. I mean, we've known about this issue for some time. As Councilwoman Gray said, this is a decades-old issue. I don't think it's short-sighted. I mean, you have residents who are being negatively impacted by those meters.
I'm only saying that as one item. We have many items. And to bring all those items, it's better to be more comprehensive. This is what you've asked for. This is what we're providing.
I agree with you.
Thank you. Thanks, but do you have anybody... Anybody else have anything to add on old business? If not, we'll move to petitions and correspondence that have been received by the clerk. Nothing from the court. I do. And now, does anybody have anything to bring up in the business? Mr. Cartier.
Mr. President, I would like to, before we even move to legislation, go into executive session briefly to talk about pending or imminent litigation.
Okay. I have a motion to go to executive session. Seconded by Mrs. Patrick. We'll call the motion to go to executive session. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
We'll move to executive session. We'll be back as soon as we can. Thank you, folks. Okay, you have a motion to come out of executive session by Mr. Cartier, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Excuse me. Roll call on the motion to come out of executive session. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
All right, we're back in business. We're out of executive session. At this time, we have our... Well, I do have announcements for committee assignments before we go to legislation. I have passed out the recent assignments from the last meeting. We have an assignment for legislation to accept the replacement pages of the qualified ordinances. We have legislation for funds for use for the commencement of the Chillicothe Municipal Drug Court, legislation to accept three thousand dollars from the Holy Prevention Program and appropriate to the Chillicothe Police Department for use in educational material, request for committee to review and update the city's current indigent burial process, Annoy Valdez, which is different than the other indigent court, request for legislation to create part-time clerical position in the auditor's office, request to review and evaluate restricted parking areas in the Chillicothe and review parking issues, request for legislation to approve the city's housing revolving loan fund, request for the Chillicothe Police Department to purchase the drug K-9 and associated equipment, and a request to... for appropriation of the fiscal year 2015 Formula Allocation Grant Program, which are CBBG funds. That's our legislation that's going out. Yes?
I'd just like to take an opportunity to announce a development committee meeting. It's going to be Monday, the eighteenth, at six-thirty. That'll be right before the finance committee meeting.
Okay.
And it's going to be Assignment Sixteen Zero Forty-four, which is a request for legislation to approve the city housing revolving loan fund, and Sixteen Oh Forty-six, which is the appropriation of 2015 CBBG funds.
Okay, thank you.
And that's... thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Along with what she just announced for her committee meeting, nuisance abatement meets tomorrow at two-thirty in the conference room across the street in Administration Building. Planning Commission meets Wednesday at four-thirty in the same conference room across the street. Finance Committee will have a committee meeting after Mrs. Neal's next Monday here in council chambers at seven o'clock. Pre-commission Tuesday, April the nineteenth, at five o'clock, again in the conference room. And Parks and Recreation Board meets Wednesday, the twentieth, at five o'clock in the conference room across the street as well. Anybody else have any other meetings to add? If not, we move to legislation. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Scobhill. Item number one.
An ordinance approving the hiring of a full-time parking enforcer and appropriating sixty thousand dollars to cover the cost of salary increase. Third read.
Roll call on the ordinance. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Chapman?
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number two, please.
An ordinance mending Section Three Five Three Four One Oh of the Qualified Ordinance of the City of Chillicothe. Third read.
Roll call on that ordinance, please. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number three.
An ordinance establishing forty-five miles per hour as a time-of-face speed limit on a specific section of Western Avenue of U.S. Route Fifty. Third read.
Roll call on that ordinance, please. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four, please.
An ordinance providing for new parking designation in the area of three hundred East Seconds within the City of Chillicothe, Ohio. Third read.
Roll call on that ordinance, please. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number six.
An ordinance providing for an agreement between the City of Chillicothe, Ohio and the Ross County Commissioners, whereby the City of Chillicothe, Ohio will continue to be eligible for state reimbursement of costs incurred and appointing council for indigent defendants in the current emergency. Third read.
Roll call on that ordinance, please. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Roll?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
I was ahead of myself. Now, item number six.
An ordinance authorizing a change in traffic direction for the alley that parallels in its north of Clay Street on the south side of Tiffin School from one-way to two-way in the current emergency. Second read.
Item number seven.
An ordinance accepting and appropriating an insurance claim payment in the amount of five hundred and eight dollars thirty-seven cents under care of a damaged light at the entrance of Yop Tangi Park. Third read.
Mrs. Corcoran?
At this time, I would like to request a waive the three-read rule.
Okay, I have to request a waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Cartier. Roll call on the request to waive the three-read rule. Cartier?
Yes.
Clay?
Yes.
Corcoran?
Yes.
Clay?
Cor...
Marima?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.[1481.88]